Welcome, we're going to call the meeting to order for the City Council and the former Katati Community Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, June 28th. So if we could have a roll call, please.
Councilmember DeLasso.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Landman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Harvey.
Here.
Councilmember Skilman.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. And if you would join me for a moment of silence as we offer for those most recent bombing victims today, and then we'll have a pledge of allegiance. Thank you. If you would join me for the pledge of allegiance.
No, sir.
I thought we had already determined that any of those items that are not action items, we will address, and if they're not.
I just wanted to remind you, sir, that this is a violation of the Brown Act, so I must keep requesting. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a different interpretation of that, but thank you very much. So, now if I could get a motion on approval in a minute?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And we're going to go into announcements. The City of Katati has special open office hours Monday evenings from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. by appointment in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Katati Open for Business Program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Katati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The run-apart Katati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at (584) 9121 or visit sonomalibrary.org. The Katati Historical Society Museum is open regularly, the second Tuesday of each month, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00, and by appointment. For more information, call (794) 0305. Citizens interested in receiving City of Katati Community Alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixle, N-I-X-L-E, dot com. And save the date Saturday, July 9th, for the Katati Kids' Day Parade and Festival. This year's theme is Camp Katati. This free event is fun for all ages. See details at kataticy.org. And now we're going to look at approval of the final agenda.
There are no changes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And now we're going to move on to presentations. Chief Parrish going to present this?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure tonight to present Officer Craig Guydon with his Police Sergeant badge. Of course, this isn't the first time you've met Craig or been introduced to Craig by me. If you recall, he's a Southern California native, and he made his way to Katati by way of Sonoma State University, which a lot of people have. While attending Sonoma State University in the Criminal Justice Program, Craig learned that he needed to do an internship somewhere. And so that somewhere was here, started in 2008, as a volunteer with our police department. He did earn his bachelor's degree, he completed that goal, and he returned to Southern California. And when he was there, he went to California State University, Long Beach, and he earned a master's degree in public administration. So then he returned to Sonoma County, and he attended the Santa Rosa Junior College Police Academy. And after graduating there, he found employment at the City of Fort Bragg Police Department. And Craig was a police officer there for a couple of years. And as you know, he later rolled to our police department, and eventually became our motor officer. I will say that Craig is, he's an excellent investigator, and he has this awesome work ethic. He is being promoted very early in his career, earlier than I made sergeant, for sure. And that's because he's just exceptional. And so I'm here to present his badge and congratulate him. So I want to have Liz come on up right now. So that's all I have. I guess that the mayor and council may have comments to make. I'm just reaching out there, so.
Mr. Landman.
Well, I'd be happy to. As all of us from a life safety, public life safety business know, you've got a great start to your career as a sergeant tonight, because no blood was shed getting your badge on. For those in the public who don't know, this is the worry, and especially for the people that have to pin the badge, because sometimes they're really hard to get through those new shirts, and it happens. But on a more serious note, congratulations. Obviously, you've been very busy this last eight years. I'm very impressed. As the chief said, it's a, perhaps promoted younger than he did, perhaps promoted much younger than I did too, but I think there's some very good things to that, and it's a good example of where hard work can take you. So my congratulations, and I look forward to seeing you have a very happy and successful career with us here. Congratulations, Craig.
Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Harvey.
Yes, congratulations, and we're so happy that you're here in Katati, and that you're providing the leadership that's needed in our department. And I'm glad that you stuck with us and came back to us, and wish you well in your career.
Thank you.
Councilmember Skilman.
Thank you. I just wanted to echo as well my congratulations. It's, having worked up in Mendocino DA's office, I know what Fort Bragg is like, so so glad you came back and joined us down here, away from the wild, wild west. But anyway, just wanted to also wish you a good, long, successful career here in Katati.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember DeLasso.
I just want to get introduced, that's all. Thanks. Yeah, again, Craig, congratulations, like everybody else said. You know, I've never seen until this evening in the pinning of the badge Lieutenant French sweat. And I'm thinking he might be a little bit nervous back there, knowing what could be coming down the road. So keep up the good pressure. Is it true that Fort Bragg, some years ago, their police department, they actually had a Corvette?
It is.
Is that past your time, or did you, were you, did you get to drive?
No, that was before my time, but they do. Yeah, there's still a resident of Fort Bragg that owns it.
That's amazing.
It's still painted black and white, and looks like a police car.
Yeah, do not get any ideas. We're not going to go there. But again, congratulations, and a happy and long career here in Katati.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Craig. We look forward to you serving us for a long period of time. It's encouraging to have the opportunity for young officers to promote, and I do think that the chief and lieutenant should keep their eyes open, and welcome. Congrats.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Would you, would council like a picture with the new?
At this point, I'll open it up if anyone else would like to make public comment regarding the pinning of a sergeant. Ms. Alderman.
I congratulate, I know I'm Mr. G., as for his being pinned sergeant. However, this does bring up the number of sergeants and above to seven, and of full-time workers out of 12, so there are now more sergeants and lieutenants and the captain that earn that than there are officers. And I think that balance needs to be looked at. And also the pay ranges of the, of the officers that reach the police sergeant and above ones. In 2014, according to Transparian's C California, there was four of them that, with wages in bed and fits, who had earned 200, one's a little under 200,000, but they all earned 200,000 or more per year. This year just came out, and, sorry.
Ms. Alderman, is this in reference to?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Well, it's not really.
You're not going to interrupt me every time I bring up something.
Ms. Alderman, this is not an action item where we're taking a vote on something.
Yes, it is.
It's a presentation of a badge to a sergeant. Thank you. Ms. Barich.
Good evening, council. For the benefit of the audience and the folks watching from home, my name is George Barich. I'm a former City Council member here in Katati, and I'd like to congratulate the new sergeant, and wish him all the best here in Katati going forward. But I think it's fair to remember that oftentimes officers like this come before the City of Katati and the council in the last 20 years, and many of them come through the front door here, and they go out the back door someplace else, and we never hear from them again. Under very unfortunate circumstances, sometimes, they, things don't work out, there are greener pastures in another city, they have a falling out with the police department, with the police chief and so forth, and this officer here has his work cut out for him, as many officers that I've known personally have told me they have their work cut out for them, more so now than ever, because this young sergeant is working under a very corrupt police chief. And it won't be easy. The council knows this will not be easy for our police officers, because this police chief was found in federal court to have violated my civil rights, and he lied under oath, as did Ms. Skilman and so forth.
Mr. Barich, I'm going to say the same thing as Ms. Alderman.
And I would like to congratulate this young officer going forward, okay? I'd like to congratulate him going forward, knowing that he's got a very, very tough task in front of him, and to, and to please heed my advice to follow your conscience, stand up for what is right, like some of the officers that have gone before you have done here in this town, and Godspeed.
Thank you.
Could I clarify something, actually?
Yes.
Yeah? Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Oh, I just wanted to clarify too, that there actually weren't any findings. It was a settlement agreement, if I understand, between our insurance company and his attorney. So just want to clarify, there were no judicial findings, if that's correct. City Attorney.
Can I clarify with the city attorney whether it was an action?
You, Robin? Hang on a minute, Chris.
In my understanding, remember, Skilman, there was a ruling on a motion, there was no judgment, there was a settlement prior to judgment, and that's the procedural context of that situation.
Thank you. Thank you. Officer Calm.
Members of the City Council and Mayor, thank you. I felt almost compelled to come up here and say something. I've known Craig for eight years. When Craig was attending Sonoma State University, he was a volunteer for our agency. Craig spent a lot of time riding along, I think he even added up his hours, it was like 1,400 hours riding along with me. Craig is completely devoted to this police department, and I can assure you that, even when he was getting his master's degree in Southern California, he would actually commute all the way from Southern California and stay at our house, so he would fulfill his commitment with the city to do his minimum hours of volunteer work, so he could still stay affiliated with this agency. I was in constant communications with him when he was in Fort Bragg, and he was just dying to come back to Katati. So that was his passion. He came to Katati, he's 100% committed to Katati, the City of Katati, and the citizens. And I can assure the City Council, I've been in law enforcement over 30 years, and I can tell you right now, you have gotten a sergeant that is an exceptional sergeant. He's extremely intelligent, and I can honestly say, you know, Craig only has to be told something once, and he retains things, whether it's penal code, case law, or whatever. And I can tell you that I see repeatedly how the officers go to him before he was promoted, and ask for him for guidance and search warrants and things like that. So we're very fortunate. I consider him almost like my son, I've told him that 1,000 times, my wife and I. I'm extremely proud of him. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else want to address the pinning of the badge? At this point, moment, I'll close the public comment on that. Thank you. Okay, now I want to move on to citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any item listed on the consent calendar, or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council policy 2016-01, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in line per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in line for any and all items on the consent calendar. Thank you. And now we'll open up for citizens' business. Ms. Alderman.
My first comment, I guess, is citizens' business. I wish that you would be very honest and not suppress my rights to speak. I would, I ask that you would ask the attorney of, if things are action items or not. You do not know all, every law in the world, and you don't, you misinterpret many laws. I can list them, but I don't have all week. You need to come together as a council, and start working on getting rid of these City Council rules. They are illegal, they're being investigated by the DA for Brown Act. They were, I had the ADA counselor, a center in Oakland, do the part about the disabilities, and they found that to be wrong, and you've done nothing. All you've done is been very rude and suppressed our rights all of the, all of this year. And we're, I'm tired of it. And that trans-essential just happened, that was not needed. I, that was suppressing my right to speak on, I had facts and figures, I was not lying, I was not doing anything out of the ordinary. I wasn't causing a disruption or anything you guys like to pin on me. All I do is say the truth. And I'm just tired of that. I'm going on to my consent calendar item now.
Thank you.
I'm just asking on this, the water main replacement project, with all the construction that's going on, we are going to be blocked out over on the west side of the town, west of the freeway, if we have West Katati being worked on, Gravemonte, in front of here at West School, there's going to be no way for us to get around. We're already very inconvenienced by all the construction going on, and I wish to, that would stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Barich.
Counsel, I think once again, it's appropriate to take a look around the room, and again, see how, how empty the room is, and what poor public participation we have at our meetings. This further goes to illustrate that, that I feel that the city government has lost faith in the community, that you are acting in, in the public's interest and with the public's trust. I also want to correct the city attorney, who is trying to misrepresent the facts. A federal court ruled against the City of Katati last year in my favor for violating my civil rights. In a summary judgment motion, we won that motion. Go on to the record and find it yourself. We were set for trial to determine the amount of damages, and instead, we went into settlement conference, and we agreed on a settlement amount. But Katati was handed itself a defeat in that lawsuit. And this city violated my civil rights, and it's all on record, and that's a stain that you're going to have to live with. Now, also, the housekeeping rules are also now on the front page of the agenda, so after three years of complaining, that's where they should have been all along, here they And you'll also notice that it's been some months that we've had a presentation from an honorary mayor. So it looks like the honorary mayor program has been, has been discontinued, and rightfully so. It's been months since we've seen an honorary mayor here, and frankly, I don't think the City Council has been good role models. So maybe the message is getting back to the schools and the parents through these streaming webcasts, that you're not good role models. And a lot of times, you're just spouting off a lot of BS, and it's the wrong kind of image to be teaching these kids. Also, I read in the paper about the city's comments about the Siemens contract that was affirmed at the last meeting. And the city's response was, well, you know, we went through some tough economic times. And because of these economic times, we needed to lease equipment going forward for the, for the city. But the fact is, the recession had nothing to do with the Water Enterprise Fund here in Katati. You run a monopoly when it comes to water. There is no competition for water and sewer rates. You have the ability to set rates and set charges in order to make capital improvement, improvements going forward, regardless of the economy. So that's just a lot of hogwash. What you're doing now is that these needed repairs are being placed on future generations of Katati residents through leases and through interest payment, because you don't have the political courage to stand up and charge as you go along. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barich. Anyone else want to address the council's citizens' business?
A number of months ago, I addressed you, because a building pretty much in the center of our quaint, small town is all but abandoned. There was eight puddles of regurgitated matter in the sidewalk, the people, the children walk by, many people now carry their dogs everywhere they go, and it was kind of questionable. There was feces of unknown origin on the side of the building, and the back area parking lot, people can't park in it because the person has a side business with a tow company to benefit, every time a car gets towed, they get a piece of the action. The parking lot and the surrounding area are abandoned, the weeds are taller than I am, and in talking to staff, they were nice enough to come to me during the break and explain that they don't come downtown too often, and that there's really nothing they can do. Well, since that time, the property owner rented with the city's cooperation to a production company for a week. Nothing was done to clean up the parking lot, nothing was done to clean anything, yet the building was occupied, it continues to have electricity, but they don't put lights outside, they don't maintain the parking lot, and if the building wasn't cement, potentially it would burn down. There are other buildings in much worse condition. Due to an agreement made with city staff, Red's Recovery Room has been all but abandoned and blighted for years. It's pretty much waiting for a magical act of fire to take it out. You have had fires in other abandoned buildings where people are coming in and living in storage units and rewiring. The idea that it's nothing you can do, well, it's an attractive nuisance, and I hope nobody perishes because there's a problem and suddenly there's a fire. So something should be done to hopefully convince the property owner to clean the drains so in the winter it doesn't flood, to potentially use it for some sort of benefit, and to not be obliterated condition in the center of the community. And other abandoned buildings should be either removed or made safe. You shouldn't just be able to walk away and leave something. You have other circumstances where you're all over certain aspects of the community, but apparently you can leave things for lease and not do anything to maintain them. It's problematic, as far as I'm concerned, and most people don't want to start a business when you're surrounded by empty vacant buildings. We used to call these ghost towns. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address council on citizens' business?
Hello. That's why I say first. I would just, this is really low-key, but I just want to express something. I wish that as a council, you would reconsider action on rent control in the City of Katati. I mean, I don't need to tell you how hard it is for people to pay for housing. It's, I, and I actually, this does not affect me, because I, I own a condo in Valparaiso. However, people with money are buying up Valparaiso and then renting out these 800 square feet places for like $2,000. I understand as well as you that, you know, we've got to wash our money from Silicon Valley. In fact, the other day, The Wall Street Journal had an article on how the cities in Silicon Valley are trying to come to grips with what the rentals are down there, which is, I think here in Katati, the mobile homes are hit especially hard, because, you know, to put your little mobile home on a piece of land with a little water, there's now $600 a month, which seems, you know, where I grew up, that's almost tyranny, but I'm a Minnesotan. So I've always, I've always respected and liked Katati, because I've always, I've been here 26 years, and I've always felt that Katati is good about social justice. You know, we run around the patch for this and that and everything, but Katati has, as while I have been here, they have been, the city has been very alert to issues of social justice. And I feel now that housing is a social justice issue for us. I'm not asking that you do this right away or anything, I'm just asking that you consider a rent control bill of some sort. I was on the rent control committee in the 90s, John was on this committee, I should say, I was with him. And so I learned a little bit about how it works, not enough to remember at my age, but I wish you'd just consider that. Okay. I thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council, citizens' business? Seeing none, I will close citizens' business.
Mayor Moore.
Councilmember DeLasso.
Just a couple of comments on some of the things I heard. There is, we have no real details, there is some activity going on over at Red's Recovery, just so you know, and we don't have a lot of detail on it, but there's the possibility of something happening there sooner than later. And actually, our honorary mayor program is very vibrant, Mr. Barich. I think what you're forgetting is it's summer vacation, and so there's no school in session. That's why we haven't had anybody here since mid-May. Just wanted to clue you in on that. Thank you.
The only other thing I would comment on, something earlier that we heard, the council did get the information regarding areas of the city that were not necessarily kept up as much as they could be, and we have been working with our Public Works Department and are looking at trying to develop a program so that those are maintained a little bit more regularly, so we don't have the health and safety issues and the appearance of light downtown. So we have addressed that and are working on a program to make that happen. So with that, Councilmember Landman.
Let's see, first of all, yeah, I think I'll just piggyback on your, your comments in terms of properties. I share and understand, we've talked about this, and actually took a little walk together looking at the mess that is around. looking at the mess that is around Exchange Bank and the downtown. That's the business we're talking about. It's not really an abandoned building. It may have the look of it at this aspect to us in some ways, but to be honest, we don't own the property. We have very little control over it. And as much as we share the same concerns about the real problem we have in parking down in the downtown because the owner has been, shall we say, somewhat miserly with the use of parking since the closing of that particular business, it is a problem. And bottom line, we have no short-term tools to deal with this. The good news, again, without getting into detail, there is interest in that building. There has been at least some ongoing interest. What will come of it, we'll see. I'm hopeful because it's, you're right, it's a key point that's right in the center of our downtown. It's important. But it's also somewhat of a difficult building to find a good match for. So it may seem like nothing is being done, but I do want to assure you there's interest and work being done on that. And as far as Red's Recovery Room, it's not looking very good, but it didn't really look very good when it was open either, to be honest. When I first moved here, I thought it was blighted, and that was 30 years ago. So, and back to a serious thing that was brought up too in terms of rent control, you know, I do think it's a fair subject for at least to suggest consideration because the discussion seems to be ongoing in this county. Santa Rosa is taking a very deep look into this and trying to find a way that works with both the interests of the public, both people who rent and people who own property as well and come up with a solution. And I think as that plays out, that may have the ability to involve others in the county. And I think at that time, that's a strong possibility. So thank you for giving us some direction on that. I personally appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Ms. Harman?
I think it's all been said.
Okay. Thank you. So with that, we will move on to the direction of future agenda items. Any at this point? Okay. And we'll now move on to the consent calendar items.
Move to approve?
I'll second that.
I have a question.
Okay.
And I'm going to direct it to our city attorney. If I had a question on just a specific item in that consent calendar, may I solicit that?
The best procedure would be to pull that item, approve the remaining items, and then take up your question and discussion of the one pulled item.
The question is broad in nature and may cover more than one, so I thought I might be able to ask the question prior to getting a motion on the consent calendar, but that's okay. So with that in mind, will I need to take a vote on that motion first before I pull that item?
If you're pulling an item, you should mention that first so we know how to vote on it.
I was about to. So I would like to pull item A, and then I will take an amended motion.
So I'll amend my motion for items B, C, and D.
And I'll amend my second. There we go.
We have motion and second on items B, C, and D on the consent calendar. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let the record show that's a five-ball vote, and I will move on to item A. My question on item A, directed toward the city staff, if I may, is, in reading over some of these contracts, both the award of the previous items that were already approved and then in A, there's reference many times to prevailing wage. And in looking at the packet material, the itemization and inventory or invoicing of this particular contract doesn't get into how there's a verification or determination that prevailing wage is actually being paid? Any thoughts on that?
City engineer Craig Scott can go into detail if you like, but he just verified that the contract is subject to prevailing wage.
Which I'm grateful for, and I think that's appropriate. I just don't know if we ever actually verify that or how we know that that's really adhered to. Having known many contractors in the past who bid contracts and get the award at the prevailing wage rate and then failed to provide the prevailing wage.
Again, I can let city engineer Scott respond with more detail, but I think that's something we could handle through the administration of the contract to assure that we get, that we get payroll reports that verify that prevailing wage is being paid. So if you'd like to give us direction to assure that, we can.
I'm starting again?
I don't know if this is completely responsive, but the contract also includes a provision requiring the contractor to maintain records for a number of years, and it gives the city the ability to inspect or audit the records at any time. So the mechanism for doing that is in the contract in terms of what the city's particular practice is, whether they do spot audits or regular routine. I can't answer that, but they do have the ability to do that.
I did notice that in the contract. So maybe at some point down the road, we'll address how we might look into that, if that's something that we might do a spot audit from time to time on some, especially in light of all of the contracts that we've been awarding lately. I think it's just we could every now and then check it out.
Question, Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely.
Interesting subject. It's the benefit of having five people sitting back here. We get some different directions on things. I was just curious, since we do have, it is part of the contract, that this is a prevailing wage contract, since we have the ability to audit and do spot checks, what would be the ramifications for a business who was potentially caught trying to shave a little extra profit by not paying everybody perhaps the full wage they should? Could those not be fairly serious?
Well, as between the contractor and the city, that would certainly be a breach of the contract, and the city would have all available remedies to it. It would also be subject to referral to the Department of Industrial Relations, and they have their own penalty scheme, and there are serious penalties for failure to comply with prevailing wage laws that that department enforces on its own. It's also fairly common, in my experience, for citizens, unions, others to bring to the attention of the department and/or the city any violations and to request enforcement actions.
Well, that's good. You'd like to think that there's some built-in mechanism that helps with the mechanism we have in place, and also the thought that there would be serious ramifications. To me, like for a small to mid-sized business, this could be threatening your business, frankly, wouldn't be worth the potential profit to take that step, I would think. Nevertheless, it's a good question. And we'd be happy to talk at some point about what method we do, maybe occasionally doing spot checks or something. That's a good idea.
Just to add to that, I will say, and I'm sure it's similar, but with federal contracts, what we've done, we've, when situations like this have occurred, we've terminated the contracts. And also, there's been, on rare occasions, fines levied on those contractors, depending on the severity of the breach and so on. But, you know, if it's something related to wages, then I would assume the city is probably somewhat indemnified through that same process.
Thank you. Ms. Harman?
So would it be an operational procedure to set that feature of checking things? Or would that be something, a policy that we would have to issue a policy for? I'll let the city attorney correct me if I'm wrong, but to me, it's an administrative process that we do.
I was just asking because if it needed to be a policy, then that might be a future agenda item that we would have to put on there.
And city engineer Scott has quite a bit of experience of payroll reports and verifying prevailing wages with his other contracts, so I think he's probably already pretty far along in having a system set up already.
Perhaps we could have a report. Perhaps we have a report back at some time in the future just on how that's going administrative. That would be very good.
Okay.
That would be great. Any further discussion on that? I didn't mean to throw anybody a monkey wrench there, but... With that, I move to approve item A and consent. Oh, pardon me. Mr. Beric? Oh, Ms. Alderman? Should we open that back up?
I just thought it was very interesting that this was also a continuation of a contract. It wasn't, it was a non-bid, and that seems very... If you have so many questions about it, why is a continuation of a contract? Wouldn't it be better to put it out to bid?
Thank you. Mr. Beric?
Well, in all the years that I've been coming to the meetings and looking at these types of issues, I don't remember the city ever even verifying legal residence of people who work for Kattati, especially in the janitorial area, let alone prevailing wage issues. This is the first that this discussion has ever come up, as far as I can remember. So it does beg the question. But the issue that came to mind when I looked at this item in the agenda packet was, you know, the city of Kattati has given a lot of lip service over the years to transparency, transparency in government, transparency in government bid, the bid process, government contracts and so forth. And once again, unless I'm reading the packet wrong, which can happen, there seems like there was no competitive bid in this situation. And it's what, a $44,000 contract? And I think it would go far for the city to have a competitive bid process, even when you're completely happy with a particular contractor who's been, who's serving the city well, like waste management and so forth, that you have, you give other vendors and contractors an opportunity to bid. And this was an issue that came up under our waste contract. It caused a lot of frustration and a lot of hostilities towards the city, that they closed the bidding process off to only one bidder, and that's not what this city is about, at least that's just not what this, I hope this city is about, that on every contract of this size, you should be going out and trying to get a competitive bid. It's fair. It's part of your policy manual, goes back city manager after city manager who's promised that this policy be honored and be first and foremost in your goal to be transparent and fair to all contractors. So I would ask the question tonight, please correct me if I'm wrong, if there's any mention in the packet tonight about going out and getting competitive bids. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to address this? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Bring it back to the council.
Mr. Mayor, yeah. Typically speaking, the idea of going out for a competitive bid does sound like a best practice at all times, and it often is. But the other thing you do have to keep in mind is the cost of actually going out to make that bid, the time involved and the number of respondents. Bottom line, if dollars are low and you're aware of that, you have to weigh those things if you make that decision with that. Hopefully, I'm not actually just stacked the deck a little making those comments, but I'm going to ask Mr. Scott to weigh in a little bit on his decision to continue this contract because I'm sure that's one of those, as we see many times, where if you take a look out in the market right now, the contract we have is working for us.
Yeah, point well made there. I'd agree with that. That, especially with janitorial services, it's very, very custom to the city at this point. There's a learning curve bringing a new contractor onboard and, you know, the key exchange and how they clean, you know, and getting access to the different rooms and the routine. And so what you're seeing here is the economy of being able to do it very efficiently because of that familiarity with our site and not having a large turnover and continually having to relearn what needs to happen at all the different sites.
So with that benefit of efficiency experience, as long as the dollars remain low, you would, unless one of those things changed, you wouldn't see a trigger to necessarily call for the need for a bid?
That's correct. And, I mean, certainly in the future, we could, we would consider having a bid, and this is subject to, I mean, it would, if we were to bid it, it would qualify for an informal bid, so we could solicit bids via email or phone calls or some...
I would imagine if the scope of work changed greatly at some point too, that might trigger the need for a bid too.
Correct. That would be another reason to do that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Harman?
My recollection on this is that this particular company won the bid from us. We rebid this a year or two ago, and this, they were the low bidder. So it hasn't been that long since we brought them on because the other company that we had, I thought, was a little bit higher, and that's why we switched to this company.
Yes, that was just a couple of years ago. And then also, we put provision in that contract for three annual updates or amendments to that contract to keep it going another three years if we were happy.
Because we didn't want to, my recollection is that we didn't want a long contract because it was a new vendor for us. We weren't sure exactly how that was going to shake out, so we did a shorter time with the possibility for extensions, just to make sure. That's, I'm remembering.
And that's to our advantage, so exactly. So if we're not satisfied with their service, we have an off-ramp. But if, on the contrary, if we are very satisfied, we can continue on with that company.
At the rates that were, that were bid, at those prevailing rates that were bid, when we created the contract.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move a resolution approving standard services agreement with integrity, construction, maintenance incorporated for janitorial services for city buildings and authorizing the city manager to execute said agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Didn't mean to go down the rabbit hole with that one. So now we'll move on to public hearings. Item 11A, public hearing for assessing lighting, landscape, and lighting maintenance assessment district rates. Mr. Scott? Is that you?
Yes. Deputy clerk, if I could get the switch over to the PowerPoint. Mayor, members of the council, Frank Scott, Public Works Director, city engineer. This item is the annual proceeding to set the assessments for the 10 landscaping, lighting, maintenance districts that we have in the city. And the city established these 10 districts for maintaining landscaping, lighting in the subdivisions. Under California law, the city is to hold a public hearing annually to set the assessments for the following year. And on June 14th, the city went ahead and approved the draft engineers' report and set the public hearing date to today, the 28th. So that's what we're here for today, is to hold the public hearing and consider 10 resolutions that levy the assessments. In fiscal year, so it's setting the assessments for the next fiscal year. And the proposed assessments are to continue funding operations and fund reserves. The reserves are to stabilize rates by paying for unanticipated expenses and improvements. For example, reserves are such that if there is a break in the irrigation system or, which would be an unanticipated cost, or there is an improvement, replanting the landscaping, rebuilding a fence, that's something that would be, it would be very difficult to take out of the annual rates or assessments because those are leveled to sort of be long-term. And then the reserves could be like a savings account to pay for those spikes in expenses. In no case are the assessments higher than what has been previously approved in prior fiscal years. And that's important here because the procedures that we follow are very strict as to if we're raising the assessments beyond what, you know, is, has been put into the rules when we first formed the assessment districts, and that would take a protest vote. We'd need a majority to go ahead and pass those, where this isn't the case. We're holding the rates the same, and so we have to hold the public hearing and consider those resolutions. These are the 10 landscaping, lighting, maintenance districts. These are the 10 landscaping and lighting maintenance districts, and the next slide just shows, gives you an idea of how many properties, how many single-family lots are within each district, and then what the proposed assessment is going to be per property. So it's $40 for a year, per year for Quail Hollow, for example. And as far as the, what the, just review what we do, the landscaping is done with a contractor, and then Public Works is typically on point for replacing the landscaping, keeping it in operating condition, trimming trees, and maintaining the lights. And that'll be, if you would get a call for a light that's out, we'd go and replace it. Now what's significant now is that you'll notice in the engineer's report, that's in the staff, the packet, the light maintenance is zero all across the zones and the districts, and that's because the city just replaced the, all the light fixtures in these zones with low maintenance, high efficiency fixtures. So we don't anticipate going back there and having any significant, or any costs there maintaining those lights, at least in the next half dozen years or so at least. Okay, that concludes the presentation. The recommendation is to go ahead and hold the public hearing, open it, have the public comments, close it, and then consider the 10 resolutions to, which approve the engineer's reports and levy the assessments for fiscal year 1617. I'd be, I'm happy to address any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Any questions from the council? Mr. Mayor?
Just a procedural one, do we have to approve each resolution one by one by one? So do, will we make a motion, take a vote, then make another motion, take a vote?
That would be the preferred procedure, yes.
Okay, just checking.
Any other questions? At this one, I'll open up for public comment. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Quick question. Sorry about that, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to ask staff, so I understand this is, there's no assessments higher than they've been in the previous prior fiscal years. Is this true also? Some of these, I know, do not allow for cost of living adjustments, these are older ones pre-1990, and the ones after that do. Does this include the cost of living adjustments, too? We have not added the cost of living adjustments, even though that is implied that we could?
That's correct. We do have that opportunity to, on four of the 10 districts, to adjust it by the CCI, the cost of living. And so, actually, I think it's the CCI Construction Cost Index for the 20th city average. We just have not done that this year.
That's good. I just wanted to clarify that, because it does kind of, that does tend to divide them into two separate sorts of issues, so I wanted to make sure this was applied to both of them. Thank you for sharing that.
Mr. Mayor.
And I also appreciate the changes that you made to the engineer's reports. A little cleanup there, thank you.
Any further questions? Now I'll open this up for public comment. Ms. Alderman?
I just wanted to say it was very memorable last year of Mr. Delioso to do all, read all 10 ones, so I suggest you have to...
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, I'll close public comment on this particular item.
I would like to say thank you for that comment, but I've already made up my mind I will not do all 10 this year, so I'm going to share the wealth.
I think that the illustrious city council should go one at a time, excluding the mayor, because we don't want to make... Okay, would you like to take a stab at that?
I'd like to move that we approve a resolution of the city council of the city of Katati accepting and approving the engineer's report for the fiscal year 201617 for the Valparaiso Vista subdivision maintenance assessment district, and ordering the establishment of the assessment rates and the levying of the collection of the same stated herein.
I would second.
All in favor?
Aye. I'd like to make a motion that we resolve of the city council of the city of Katati accepting and approving the engineer's report for the fiscal year 201617 for the Quail Hollow subdivision maintenance assessment district, and ordering the establishment of the assessment rates and the levying and collection of the same as stated therein.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Who said local government wasn't exciting to watch, huh?
I move a resolution of the city council of the city of Katati accepting and approving the engineer's report for fiscal year 201617 for the Summers subdivision maintenance and assessment district, and ordering the establishment of the assessment rates and the levying and collection of same as stated therein.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
I moved, you guys aren't talking, I'm going for a, move a resolution of the city council of the city of Katati accepting and approving the engineer's report for fiscal year 201617 for the Macklin subdivision maintenance assessment district, and ordering the establishment of the assessment rates and the levying and collection of same as stated therein.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, you're making me feel guilty now. I'd like to move a resolution number 2016-54, accepting, resolution of the city capital of the city of Katati accepting and approving the engineer's report for fiscal year 201617 for the Sierra Meadows subdivision maintenance assessment district, and ordering the establishment of the assessment rates and the levying and collection of same as stated therein.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I move a resolution of the city council of the city of Katati accepting and approving the engineer's report for fiscal year 201617 for the Oak Knoll subdivision maintenance assessment district, and the ordering and the, start again, and ordering the establishment of the assessment rates and the levying and collection of same as stated therein.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. I'd like to make a motion, the resolution of the city council of the city of Katati accepting and approving the engineer's report for fiscal year 201617 for the Garden Gate subdivisions maintenance assessment district, and ordering the establishment of the assessment rates and the levying and collection of same as stated therein.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move a resolution of the city council of the city of Katati accepting and approving the engineer's report for fiscal year 201617 for the Park Meadows subdivision maintenance assessment district, and ordering the establishment of the assessment rates and the levying and collection of same as stated therein.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move a resolution of the city council of the city of Katati accepting and approving the engineer's report for fiscal year 201617 for the Altman Acres subdivision maintenance assessment district, and ordering the establishment of the assessment rates and the levying and collection of same as stated therein.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I move a resolution of the city council of the city of Katati accepting and approving the engineer's report for fiscal year 201617 for the Santero Way, right, we did miss that one?
Yeah, you did.
Thank you. Developments Maintenance, Development Maintenance Assessment District, and ordering the establishment of the assessment rates. We did this one already?
No.
No, you're good.
Skipped it.
Skipped it. Oh, sorry.
Now I gotta read it all over again. I move a resolution of the city council of the city of Katati accepting and approving the engineer's report for fiscal year 201617 for the Santero Way Development Maintenance Assessment District, and ordering the establishment of the same, of the assessment rates and the levying and collection of same as stated therein.
And I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is that all 10 of those?
That's it.
That was entertaining.
I would hope we wouldn't make a mistake and have to start over, that would be very problematic.
Glad we entertained you.
Now we will move on to regular action, regular agenda, item 12A, approval of 2016 C National Night Out event in La Plaza Park. Then we have our Park and Recs Director, Ashley Wilson.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. We, National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes community-police partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie. It is held in all 50 states, and it's annual, an annual event on the first Tuesday in August. This year, the Police Department and Recreation Department would like to partner together to offer it to Katati while bringing back beloved, a special event that used to happen many years ago, which is Movies in the Park. So we kind of want to combine the two together and get involved with the National Night Out as well, so kill two birds with one stone and offer another recreational event for the community as well. We have looked at the financial considerations, and the amount that we have requests, expected it to cost is roughly 3,500, which would be in our adopted budget. We would not request any additional funding for it, seeking staff, our staff time would be as budgeted for it, and as well as the supplies. And this would also go along with our, the council goal is to enhance community engagement, which has been an ongoing goal for the council for the last few years. And at this time, I would take any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
I have a couple of questions. First, it talks about a barbecue. Who is actually doing the cooking?
The Police Department will be.
Okay, oh my goodness, all right. And the second question I have is, it says that dinner would start at 7:00, and since this is a family event, I was wondering if there was any consideration to offering that a little bit earlier, because I know that most people with children, 7:00 o'clock is way too late for them to be eating dinner. So maybe, I was wondering if you could consider more something like around 6:00?
We can certainly consider offering the dinner at an earlier time. The reasoning behind that was because Sunset is scheduled that day to be at 8:19, and planning the movie to start has to be dark, so we could look at 6:00 o'clock dinner, or just would have a lot more time in between the ending of dinner and the beginning of the movie. We can, we could offer more type of field games and other activities that would fill in that time, so I'm not, we're not opposed to it at all. That was just kind of to keep things smooth.
Right. I just know, having little kids around a lot, that 7:00 o'clock is a little late for them to be eating.
And I also need to just, I forgot to mention that there is a typo in the conditions of approval, item 3, it is requesting August 9th, but it would actually be August 2nd.
Any further questions? I, I think that the, an earlier dinnertime would be great. I think going right from a barbecue to a movie limits the engagement opportunities, and I, and I think that this is a great idea. I think that apparently, or it's evident, I think that the Police Department got the memo regarding engagement, and I think it's really encouraging, and look forward to this, so... Oh, the other thing I might, I might add is, I may be able to get a donation of a movie screen?
Oh, okay.
Knowing those people that put on the Movies in the Park previously, I believe they still have that. So I can check on that for you, and if that saves us a couple of bucks.
Yeah, definitely, thank you.
And I'll open this up for public comment. Anyone wish to express? Ms. Alderman?
I may have got this incorrect, but it seemed like there was a budget for the extra police officers for that evening. I don't think that's very appropriate, if it is a community night out, that they, we have extra police officers on duty because of the event. They should, it shouldn't be, it's a mutual exchange, they shouldn't be in their police role, if it's more of a recreational community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Berch?
Katati Night Out, $3,500, $3,500 for this event, a one-night event, does raise some questions on priorities. We just had our, we just finalized our city budget a couple of weeks ago, and if you remember, you know, we don't have one dime allocated to the homeless for getting the homeless transported from Katati down to the homeless shelter in Petaluma. We haven't scheduled any events for the homeless to get them out of the freezing cold in November, December, January, and it's June now, but staff's working on it. I don't know where in the budget we allocate any money towards the Rona Park Katati Animal Shelter. Correct me if I'm wrong, I don't remember seeing that line item, but the budget was so sparse in detail, it could be there, and I didn't see it. But no pun to the Recreation Department here. If the council is so concerned about including everybody at these types of events and make sure that every evening out in Katati is one where people don't freeze in their cars or freeze outside in the freezing weather, let's look at our budget, let's see where we can find money to not only help with events like this, but make sure that our consciousnesses are clear, that we're not stuffing our face with food and watching movies while people live under the radar in our town in complete object poverty.